Good evening. I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking your guidance as we work together to move our school district forward. We are grateful for the dedication of our employees who are outstanding teachers and outstanding stewards of our finances, and we are thankful that their good works further the work of our school system. Father, we know that many of our children will be out and about these next few days for holiday celebrations, and we pray that they are all kept safe by your love and grace. These things we ask in your name.
Ms. Lemoine, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Foote.
Mrs. Aceveda is not with us. Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Dr. Kraft does meeting with the retired teachers. Mr. Egan.
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Mrs. Diesart.
Here.
Dr. Lewis is at a conference.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Nakoshia.
Here.
And Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Ms. Foote. Before, the first item on the agenda, community concerns. Did we have anyone that signed up?
Not tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dennisak. Ms. Foote, did you want to take a point of vote?
I was going to ask if you wanted to talk about the ceremony on Monday.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we have very exciting news. We had a teacher who was presenting an award at Joe Davies', and this is a national award, and I think it's the Milken Foundation.
Milken Foundation.
And they only present, is it 34?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five per year, and it's a very, very prestigious award. Nobody can apply for this, but the Milken Foundation goes out and seeks to, and looks at the teaching ability and the teaching achievement that students succeed in, and then they choose a teacher. And this year's teacher was Ms. Catherine Randall, and she is a third grade teacher at Joe Davies', and she was completely surprised. We had John White, who is the superintendent of the state of Louisiana, who was with us. We had, gee whiz, we had the clerk of court with us. We had, of course, Ms. Foote. We had almost every board member at this table with us. We had the sheriff, the district attorney.
Parish president.
The parish president. It was quite a recognition, not only for Catherine, but for the whole parish of St. Bernard. And we too, I don't know, how many years has the Milken Foundation been giving this award?
The Milken Foundation has been giving them out for 30 years, and we were fortunate with Ms. Randall as she was chosen a Milken educator. This is the third time our district has been recognized. Back in 2003, we had Phyllis Daisidoo, who was teaching that at the time at St. Bernard High School. And then in 2011, Denise Pritchard, the principal at Trist Middle School. And now we've been tapped again with Catherine Randall at Joe Davies', and I think it just goes to show the talented teachers and administrators that we have here in our school system, and we're very fortunate to have those three ladies all with us, as well as our other teachers and administrators who do a wonderful job each and every day.
So that's a high school teacher, one of our middle school teachers, and now an elementary school teacher. And the grand prize award, which was very, very generous on the Milken Foundation's part, they give the teacher a check for $25,000. And so that is a very, very generous award, and, you know, they put their hard-earned money from the Milken Foundation toward education, you know, in recognizing those who achieve so much in our classroom and give so much to our students. And it's, you know, that day was just, it was a wonderful presentation, but then afterward, that evening, I saw a few of Ms. Randall's students, and they were just so excited that their teacher won this award. I mean, they were so proud and so excited. And so anyway, from every standpoint, it was just a wonderful, a wonderful day, not only for Catherine Randall, but Joe Davies Elementary in our entire school system. And I think, you know, it shows that, Ms. Foote, all the way from you, Ms. Larson, the administration, the school board, you know, the principals, the curriculum, everybody down, you know, working as a team, you know, it shows that they're working very hard. Again, congratulations, Catherine Randall. We're very, very happy and proud of you. So thank you. Mr. Campbell.
In addition, I was so impressed with the student body at Davies'. They were so courteous, friendly, attentive, and talented. There's some wonderful things in Joe Davies'.
There is. In addition to Joe Davies', on Friday, I was, I had the opportunity to attend La Casa Elementary School's pep rally. And again, the student body there was just wonderful, and the teachers, they, you know, cheerleaders and the dance team performed, but also Trist Middle Schools band performed, some of the band members performed. And I tell you, they sounded like high school students, and just the behavior and just the participation at La Casa Elementary was also wonderful, and they did a great job, too. So we have great schools, and we're very blessed to have so many wonderful teachers in our schools. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Next item on the agenda is 2015, 2016 Financial and Compliance Audit Report. Mr. Fernandez, that time of year.
Okay. You each have a copy of our comprehensive annual financial report that we prepare every year. The statements have been audited by our independent auditors, LaPorte. We have our friends, Don Laberry and Mickey Simon here today to give you the results of their audit, and I'm just going to turn it over to Don.
Good evening.
Hi.
All right. Thanks, David. As he mentioned, I'm Don Laberry. I am Director of Audit and Assurance with LaPorte, and have the honor of being able to work with the school board for many years now and being a part of the school system. Very proud to be a part of, be here today with you to present the results. Also, I have Mickey Simon with me today. He is the senior manager who provided the oversight on the audit in the field and helped us to get this product to you today. I want to thank the board, Ms. Diesart and Ms. Foote, for, I know we do tend to make inquiries during the course of the audit, and we appreciate your time to help us get that completed. I also want to thank David and his staff. I know I say it every year, but this document is created by he and his staff, and I think it's a testament to how much hard work that they put in to be able to provide this document. And we truly do perform an audit of these financial statements, and this is a St. Bernard So just to go through some financial statement highlights, I'll tell you to turn to page 22. This is the statement of net position. And essentially, this statement and the statement that is on page 23, which is the statement of activities, are what they deem the government-wide statements. These are the full accrual basis statements that essentially have all the long-term assets, long-term liabilities, kind of look more like a business than, you know, a governmental-type entity. And so just wanted to point out to you that that, that those statements are full accrual. They have all the long-term assets and liabilities on them. On page 26 is the fund financials, and this basically has the governmental-type funds, your general fund, special revenue funds, any capital project funds or debt service funds would be in your fund financials. I wanted to point out that with the general fund, there is a healthy fund balance, and one way that you can determine whether you have a healthy fund balance or not is to look at a calculation that is your number of days expenditures, which is essentially how much fund balance could cover your expenditures, how many days expenditures could be covered by that. The GFOA recommends 60 days as a minimum. We did have 63 days this year, 62 last year, so it was a little bit of an improvement. So we have met that threshold, and so I think that pretty much is a testament to the health of the general fund, fund balance. As far as the notes to the financial statements, they're pretty similar to how they have been in previous years. The one thing I wanted to point out was there was the adoption of a new standard that requires disclosures about, a little more enhanced disclosures about assets and liabilities that are measured at fair value. For the school board, there are some investments that are measured at fair value, so this would be in note. Note one, you would explain the implementation of this, and note two would have the actual disclosures, which explain a little more detail about fair value. This isn't anything that changed, any accounting calculations or anything like that. It's just a pretty much a disclosure-type standard, so no significant change, but wanted to point out to you that that was new this year. Pretty much, as far as the rest of the notes, they're pretty similar to previous year and give further detail of what's on those financial statements. As far as the opinion, I'm kind of going back here, but we did have the opinion on the financial statements that was an unmodified opinion, and that is the highest level of assurance which we can give on an audit. We also have a couple of other opinions in there. We do a report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. So this essentially, if we had any issues with internal controls over financial reporting or on compliance issues, we would point that out. This would be bid law, budget law, asset management laws, debt compliance, things like that. So I'm happy to report that we had an unmodified opinion there as well, so no findings and no recommendations or significant deficiencies that we noted. There's also the report on compliance for each major federal program, report on internal control over compliance, and report on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards that's required by what used to be called A133. Now it's the Uniform Guidance. Essentially, this is the report over compliance and internal controls related to your federal awards that you've been given and expended. So if there were any issues that we found as far as any compliance findings regarding the federal awards that we tested or any controls over those federal awards, that would be reported here, and I'm happy to report that there were no findings there as well. We did receive full cooperation from management and appreciate all the hard work that goes into this. We basically are out here for many weeks and request a lot of information, and just happy to report that, as usual, we received full cooperation, and it really is a pleasure to work with the staff here, and they work hard to get this done in a relatively short timeframe, because your year ends June, and usually just closing out the books and things like that can take a while, but it gets done, and I'm pretty impressed at how well it gets done and how quickly it gets done. So that's my short and sweet report on the financials, and if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those.
Okay. Any questions, anyone?
Nothing, other than that, the, I know it seems same old, same old every year, and that's good in the area of financial accounting. I think what the auditor has basically said when she says no findings, that's one of the best things that you can hear when a group comes in. So we don't have any suggestions for improvement in those areas. There are no findings at all. Every penny is accounted for and accounted for properly, and as they have gone through all of our financial records from the very beginning source documents up until the actual product that you see in front of you, it's always good to know that, I guess we would, if we were in a school, as we are in a school system now, I would venture to say we've got an A-plus on the audit, so no financial, no findings, no suggestions for improvements on internal controls, no management letter recommend with those types of recommendations. I just want to say and again compliment our financial officer, David Fernandez, and the group that he works with, and the very, I guess we're not staffed, we're not overly staffed back there as well. So they do an incredible job with the amount of money that flows through the system from a variety of sources, local monies and state monies and federal funds, and that I think the public then has the assurance that it is all accounted for properly and that our practices do meet the highest level of review. So while we thank you for that report, I just want to say personally, I am not surprised because I know the competency of our staff and the integrity of our staff everywhere from the, from our teachers out in the schools that are putting in these initial documents all the way through to Mr. Fernandez and our top administrators to handle everything properly. So I think the public has the assurance of good stewardship, and as I say each time, and I know that the FEMA monies are, I guess drying up, if you want to say at this point with our last major project, that with the over $500 million that has passed through our hands just through FEMA monies, as well as all of our other federal funds and local and state monies, that it's a testament to the people who work here that we have never had a finding or any question cost on any of these funds whatsoever. So thank you for that report.
Anyone else?
Ms. Foote.
Pension obligation, is that our port of the unaccrue liability that's been passed down? That's our portion from the state?
Yes. You want to explain that a little bit?
Sure.
And then I'll give you my editorial comment on it that is from a non-
Right.
-accounting point of view, just from a common sense point of view, but why don't you talk about, I guess, the GASB regulations?
Yes. Last year, GASB 68 was implemented. That was the standard that required that the pension, the school board's piece of the pension liability to be recorded. Essentially, I know we had a discussion earlier about it, so whether or not, I know the question of whether or not that's truly a liability and whether that gets paid out, is that something they would come back tomorrow and say, I want to pay, I want to get payment on? I don't think it works that way. But because of the implementation of this standard, with, I think, a little bit of debate maybe from the public, it's requiring that that portion of it that's actuarially calculated to be put on the face of the statement, on your government-wide statements as a long-term liability. It doesn't change that you're going to make your payments every year. I think everything pretty much flows the way that it's always flowed as far as making that pension payments, but now we're just required to have that liability estimate placed on the face of the statements.
What's that called again? What, the GASB?
GASB 68.
GASB.
Which, and GASB is the governmental, governmental accounting standards board. So because of that, it gets put on there, and there's also deferred inflows and outflows that are related to some amortization of that over time. But, I mean, essentially, it's recorded on there, and all governmental entities that have employees that have pension plans have to put this on there. I know last year, in the year of implementation, there was, everybody seemed to take some sort of a hit, and that bottom line on the government-wide standard statement seemed to reflect negatively a little bit, but I think the vein of what's happening every year is going, is continuing the way that it's always continued, in that the payments are made, but we just have to reflect that liability.
Now, the constitutional amendment five that's on the ballot, will that, I think, part of that's going to be dedicated towards solving that pension problem?
Well, that's the unfunded, the U-
accrued liability.
Right. And as far as it relates to the TRSL or the lasers, I know they're putting that out there as far as taking some 30% of the certain funding and putting that on there, but that's ultimately, I think, not necessarily dealing with the St. Bernard Parish School Board directly, you know, dealing with funding.
Okay. Thanks.
Right. This new GASB 68 nationwide, I think you're seeing not only school districts, but all local, all governmental bodies that participate in any type of a pension plan require to reflect that on each entity's financial statements. Now, again, from the non-accountant point of view, to me from the common sense point of view, at least in my opinion, whether that does any good or not, you know, I would venture to say that the responsibility for that liability rests not with the local body, but with the state of Louisiana, who it's my, I'm under the assumption they are the ones backing the teachers' retirement system and the school employees' retirement system. And if, for example, we would go out of business tomorrow, I mean, say, when Katrina struck 11 years ago, if this parish and school system ceased to exist and we were scattered all over, then the St. Bernard Parish school system would no longer be there, yet it would not affect anyone's retirement or pension, because we did not, we don't, we are not backing that system. So every retiree at that point who was paid by the state of Louisiana would still be paid their pension, and then any active employee who had been with us would carry their years and their contributions with them to the next school system they went to and still be part of the system. So if we cease to exist, it's not as if this money is owed from the St., I don't look at it as, this money is owed from the St. Bernard Parish school system to the state of Louisiana for that part of the UAL. Look what happened, has happened in Orleans Parish and with the advent of charter schools where they have no, they do not have to belong, their teachers do not have to belong to the retirement system. Well, the entity that predated them, which were part of the Orleans Parish school system, no one went to the Orleans Parish School Board and said, well, now for those schools that are no longer participating in the retirement system because they ceased to exist, that you are now responsible directly for their payments or for what their liabilities were. It was just absorbed from the rest of the membership within the retirement system itself and the state of Louisiana. So for us to have to put that and reflect that as a future liability, I think is very misleading. As David and I were having that discussion before with Don and Mickey, you know, his point, David's point was too, that each year through the MFP, monies for a portion of that come to us in the funding formula, and then we turn around and remit it right back to the system itself. So I think there's a lot of, I don't know, it's hard to say that's truly our liability that we would have to set aside funds to make sure that we cover in the future, because if we didn't exist, that liability would be picked up by the entire state and the other members. So I don't know if that's helpful at all from that point of view.
Well, Lejeune, he recently presented at the, at a chamber luncheon, constitutional amendment number five, and it's deferred funding or something like that, this constitutional amendment, and part of it is going to be dedicated towards paying the pension debt at some point.
At some point, if this, this is meant for a portion of the fund balance and this, then this, and then the percentage that's left would be dedicated to the unfunded accrued liability of the public pension plans, which are teachers' retirement, school employees' retirement, and state employees' retirement among several, you know. So which is, to me, a good thing.
Right.
If that existed and helped to pay that off.
So we should support that constitutional amendment, I guess, if that's going to reduce this number.
Well, all we can do is inform the public of what's there in terms of using public funds to say whether we support it or not support it is a whole different issue, but we can explain to the public what is in those amendments. So it would be very helpful, I think, as you're right, Mr. Warren, very helpful if a portion of that money was dedicated. So I think people who are supporting our local governmental bodies and school systems should look very closely at that amendment, because that would be a source of funding for the UAL.
Thanks.
Yeah. And while you're on the amendments, I don't want to stray too far from the agenda item, but there's amendment number six on the ballot that has to do with the ability to cut dedicated and constitutionally protected funding sources by a certain amount of money, which now the Constitution doesn't allow them to do, and our MFP funding formula would be in jeopardy at that point, which would make it very, much easier to cut our funding. They would not have, if these certain things existed, if you look at- They would not have, if these certain things existed, if you look at the amendment itself, if revenues did not, were not as much as the prior year state revenues, then they had the ability to cut these dedicated funding sources. So I think if we're looking in the best interests of the school system and such, that we would ask people to really pay attention to Amendment Number Six and what it actually does, because that the funding sources for K-12 education, among other dedicated funds, which are now constitutionally protected and can only be cut for a very small amount under certain conditions, it would open us up to a greater percentage. So please read Amendment Six, Number Six, very, very carefully.
Thank you, Ms. Vouchet, Mr. Warner, anyone else? Well, Dawn and Mickey, we thank you for your hard work and for your cooperation through this whole process, and we want to thank Mr. Fernandez for his excellent job on our budget and his staff members, and we always say it every year too, you know, we don't, we have a limited staff, but they do a great job, and we thank you, you all, for all your hard work. And Ms. Padaseveta, I know, put the book together for us, and we appreciate her help every year, who, she's retired, but she comes back for that purpose to help. So, you know, congratulations, Mr. Fernandez and your staff, and it's very good that, you know, the audit has no exceptions and that everything checks out the way it should, and so we appreciate your report, and thanks again. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Always good to see y'all. Next item is a motion to incorporate the report of the October 18, 2016 General Committee Meeting into the minutes of the October regular monthly meeting.
So.
There is a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Long. Any discussion? Please cash your votes.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Next item is a motion to approve the minutes of the regular monthly meeting of September 27, 2016, as published on October 21, 2016. There's a motion by Ms. Lamoy, seconded by Mr. Kosha. Any discussion? There being none, please cash your votes.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Thank you. Next item, order personnel changes. Good evening, Mr. Granberry.
Good evening, good evening. We have some additions.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
He's gonna retire.
Doesn't seem that long ago that David and I were interviewing people for that position, but it was almost nine years ago, believe it or not.
Time passes, huh?
He's done an excellent job.
Excellent job. So he's going to be sorely missed because he handles some vital parts of our school system operation. He's done a magnificent job these last nine years, so.
And I just want to add to that, you has really, you know, he's come to us after the storm and done an excellent job, and so we appreciate everything, all his hard work and everything he's done for the system, but happy retirement, you. It kind of surprised us there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Joe?
I agree that, you know, we're gonna miss you. On a positive note, though, at least his wife's not gonna retire right now.
Oh, I'll talk to her. We're gonna hold on to her as long as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, we have another retiring right below.
We have another retiring.
Okay, and needless to say, if you remember last week, I said we were in need of math teachers. Well, now we're in need of another math teacher.
Oh, wow. Well, Victoria Tuck from Trist Mills Elementary School, Trist Middle School. Victoria, we thank you for your-
Wrong person.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
Wrong person.
I'm sorry, Diane Dabival.
That's it?
From Raleigh.
Raleigh.
Who's the math teacher. And we want to wish Diane a very happy retirement, and we will miss you too.
So if anybody knows any math teachers, we're still searching.
So we search up the math teachers.
No, Ms. Dabival not leaving till January, so we do have some time.
Okay. We're already in October. The year, this school year's flying by.
It's amazing.
And I know we mentioned Ms. Susan DeFass at the committee meeting, you know, it's just-
So hard to see that.
It's, yeah. She is surely missed, and Ms. Seibert, you know, again, has done, doing an excellent job. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Granberry. Thank you. Okay, items to be placed on the agenda the next committee meeting. Does anyone have anything? Okay, we have two for the next committee meeting, and items on the agenda. Next item, superintendent's recommendations.
Just a couple of reminders, tomorrow is Report Card Conference Day or Evening. Each of the schools will start their Report Card Conference Day an hour after school ends, and they all have their times. So primarily, the, you know, the elementary will run from 4:30 until after 7:00 that night, and the middle school, I guess, at 4:00 until a little after 7:00, and so will the high school an hour after they close at 3:30 on. So please, you know, we will have school a full day tomorrow, a one-hour break, and then we'll start the Report Card Conference Evening at each of the three schools. And then a reminder, on November 8th, which is our next committee meeting, but it's also Election Day, that day the students will be off from school, because most of our schools will be used as polling places for the parish, but our employees, our teachers, will have a professional development day, so they'll be meeting at different sites for professional development. They'll be here that day, but our students will be home. Okay?
Ms. Vouchet, what about the homecoming?
Oh, the homecoming, this, go ahead. No, the homecoming is this weekend.
Right.
And Sherman High School's homecoming, and that's always a very, very nice event, and it's a good football game to go to if you're choosing one or two to attend, so it's always a good evening. Thank you, Mr. Remind.
And congratulations to all the homecoming court at Sherman High School. Okay, anyone else? Ms. Campbell?
We have to.
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor of the motion?
I think he has a pity that do it once.
All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.